Your life.
Like to call to order the meeting of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners for February 8, 2022. At this time, would you please stand for the pledge and the invocation given by Ms. Will Anne?
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this day and this opportunity to come to another meeting to just take care of county business. I pray for the commissioners that they would use wisdom and just be able to have clarity of mind as they make decisions. And Jesus name, amen.
Right, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Will Anne.
Yes, sir. We have three additions today under section one, number one, which is a presentation of Employee of the Month by Ms. Judy Austin. Section two, one F, which is to add board approval of meeting minutes. And number sixteen, request board approval of task work order for F D O T Sig P grant.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Chairman, we're going to make the motions to approve the minutes. That should be a correction on the date correction on page eleven.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We're just doing the agenda.
Okay.
The minutes will come up later.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you get a motion?
I don't have. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner McKinney, second by Commissioner Hill to approve the agenda. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Okay, Ms. Judy.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I'm here just wanted to present the award for the Employee of the Month for February 2020. So at this time, I would ask for Mr. William McCrone to come to the front of the room. So I'll read the proclamation. Whereas Jackson County has established an Employee of the Month program to recognize one employee to represent the various departments. And whereas Mr. William McCrone began his employment with the county on August 20th of 2020 as a maintenance technician, has been selected for the Employee of the Month for February 2022 for the standards that he has displayed in the performance of his job duties. And whereas Mr. McCrone is an exemplary employee, he demonstrates professionalism and courtesy and provides prompt attention in all matters. Mr. McCrone exhibits stellar attitude when interacting with coworkers and members of the public and is always willing to assist his coworkers in projects or tasks. He is ready to tackle the project at hand with a smile and has an outstanding knowledge of what he, of what it takes to get the job done. He is a valuable asset to the county and his diligence and willingness to go the extra mile play an important role in the success of the maintenance department. Specifically, William went above and beyond when he helped with several furniture projects at the administration building. He was quick to address our needs with a smile and a can do attitude. He is always pleasant and ensures that he asks if there's anything else he can do to help. Now therefore be proclaimed at the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County Florida, commands and congratulates Mr. William McCrone on his selection as Employee of the Month for February of 2022.
Thanks for all your hard work. And he did an outstanding job. I watched him, his furnace together.
You watched him, wasn't he? Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Page.
I move that to approve the Employee of the Month for February of 2022, authorize a fifty dollar check and a payday off, adopt the proclamation and authorize the chairman to sign.
Got a motion by Commissioner Page and a second by Commissioner Hill. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCrone and A.J. Okay, moving along. Consent agenda items. All of you have received a copy of the agenda. Soon you have read it. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Got a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Hill. Any discussion?
Yes, with the minutes on page thirty-three.
Page thirty-three.
Special meeting, the thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. The date correction should be, the arbitration filing date, February first, but the Zoom meetings should be first and second, instead of the eighth and ninth. Is that correct?
That is correct.
My, my motion would do.
Do you amend your motion to reflect the changes pointed out by Commissioner McKinney?
First and second.
First and second of March.
I think that we said the eighth and ninth, so I think you documented it correctly, but that was the wrong date. It's March first and second.
Yeah, I think they initially discussed, but anyway, all right. Any more questions? There are none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Okay. Mr. John Petry. I'll get it close. Come on, you got Lake Seminole cleaned up?
Well, I don't know if we got it cleaned up or not. We have five counties on our resolution.
Okay.
Last night, early county joined us. Since we have been pressuring the court, they have started to spray. They said they had two hundred thousand dollars in budget this year and they started to spray in Spring Creek. They have more to go. They've also said they've now found another two hundred thousand dollars. So we are getting something out of this year's budgets. We sent you a letter that we had drafted and we had hoped in a way that you might have had something to add to it with the last meeting, we appreciated your comments so deeply and it was so pleasant to be here. We thought that there might have been something you needed to add. What we have done is we're asking for two million dollars. The Corps of Engineers had supplied us with a number of eight fifty and Governor, Congressman Bishop had asked for eight fifty. We realized that the eight fifty is a maintenance fee. We need to do the restoration, so we're asking for the two million. If there's any suggestions, we'd love to have them. If not, this is the letter that's going to go. And you'll also notice we're sending this to three congressmen, four senators. It's also going to go to two governors. The D N R is going to get a letter also because of the state park that's in the county. And anyone else that we could possibly think of.
Well, the state park in Florida is not under D N R. Red, who, Three Rivers. Yeah, I know. That's what he's talking about, but we got Three Rivers. Who is that under for the state of Florida? Would you make sure he has the correct information? We ensure they get a copy of this letter.
I had talked to. Okay, I had talked to the Rangers in the state park and they assured me it was D N R in Georgia.
In Georgia, but we're talking Florida.
Okay.
Because we want, not only do I want to see them clean Georgia, I want to see them clean Florida too.
And I'll, well. But is, but is it in, is it in the jurisdiction of Florida?
Yes.
It is.
I'll email you. Okay.
Three Rivers State Park just north of Snee is where we're represented.
Okay, I understand now. Got lost for a minute. Excuse me. We are, like I say, we are seeing them try to do things. There was a meeting last Monday. Rep, were you able to? Did you? It's the same rhetoric. No money. The thing about last month, last week's meeting was Bobby Moore was there. Bobby Moore is the boss of the core or the spray of the two lakes. I had a long, not a long conversation with him, but I made him understand that we appreciated their work at the cleanup. After the hurricane, they did a terrific job. And his complaint was that they didn't get any money for the lake. And I pointed out to him, we appreciate that, we accepted that, but we're now three years later and nothing's been done. And so. Mr. Page, you have a question?
Yeah, well, when you said they were cleaning up on Spring Creek, you talking about Spring Creek in Georgia?
Georgia.
In Georgia.
We do have a Spring Creek here and we got Jackson County, but it's not part of Lake Seminole. Unfortunately, I'm tied to Lake Seminole. Right.
Edric is actually the middle lake.
Right. So anybody have any more questions?
Yeah, I just, I was glad to see you include the governors as part of the recipient of this letter. I think that's important to address both of the governors of both the state of Georgia and Florida as well.
And if there's no objections, we are going to let these letters go probably Friday.
Would you need a motion to authorize you to sign the letter? I'll offer a motion to authorize the chairman to sign the letter that's included in our agenda packet.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Donald Froh, a second by Commissioner Hill to approve the letter. Any questions? There are none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. We will sign it. Rep will coordinate with you to make sure that D E B is in Florida, is on the distribution.
Mr. Petry, can you kind of keep us apprised as to the results of this and if there's any action or inaction so that we can stay apprised?
We have discussed the, the way, help me out. We have discussed, who's, point of contact, I'm sorry. We have discussed who would be point of contact and we've decided that our committee will be point of contact. If we send it everywhere, it would be, it's just chaos. So if we receive anything, I can assure you, I will again request time and be more than happy to fill you in. If you, if it's something that needs immediate attention, you should have Mr. Daniel's contact information.
Yes, sir.
Coordinate directly with him.
I, I do.
And I mean, it's not necessary that you come over and brief us. If you and him coordinate, he can brief us. Okay, we appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your doing.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quentin Eastburg. Quentin Eastburg.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Quentin Eastburg, Deputy Director, Appalachian Regional Planning Council. Had the privilege of working with Commissioner Page, now Commissioner Dona Froh and Transportation District Board in Jackson County. And of course, Commissioner Peacock serves on the A R P C representative for the county as well. So what I have before you today is a request to reestablish interlocal agreement that previously was held. It used to be called the Chapola R T A back, gosh, I think, two thousand six, two thousand seven, way before I started working with council. This is in regards to a D O T program called the Transportation Regional Incentive Program or TRIP. Is it the acronym we go for? The TRIP program allows eligible partners, and that's kind of one, I think you might all have this in your packet, little fact sheet. Basically, it brings together, in our case, two or more contiguous counties that are not members of an M P O, Metropolitan Organizing, to be eligible for funding through D O T for multiple different kinds of projects that are kind of listed out that help develop. They serve a national statewide or regional function. They, they're included. They have a part of the strategic internal system. And they also have, sorry, I'm missing on the fact sheet where I was looking at. But the long story short, the inclusion of the interlocal agreement would allow partners that would be then develop a regional transportation plan, delineate its boundaries of the R T A, provide duration of the agreement and planning process. So what I'm trying to get to is the Chapola R T A, which was way before my time, was between Jackson County and Gulf County. There also existed one between Franklin and Liberty County. And then under this program, the counties would put together ideas, projects that they want to see in D O T's five-year work plan. And then it would be prioritized between those regional entities. So for instance, you know, the previous three, there's a project in Jackson County, a project in Gulf County. The executive committee for this R T A would get together and say, all right, we, this is our number one priority in the region, our number two priority, and then that goes back to D O T and D O T to reprioritize and so forth. I've had contacts with the Regional Walter of D O T District Three. This is a significantly underutilized program. I think in part because the, you know, the agreements might have gotten lost and we found those recently back in the, like I said, from oh six and oh seven. So what I'm trying to get to is for your consideration, reestablishing a TRIP partnership. The Regional Planning Council served as the lead agency back in oh six and oh seven. I've been able to dig through and find some old files on that. Some of that stuff is now obsolete. And in our talks with D O T, they made the recommendation for the rural counties west of Tallahassee to consider combining into one five-county R T A. Again, it's no cost to the county. The Regional Planning Council will assume responsibilities of being the lead agency, which simply would serve as staff to the executive committee, which in the interlocal agreement would be one elected official from each county with an alternate. And then we'd meet, I think, once, maybe twice a year for an hour to go over projects. The counties would be responsible working with our engineers and the grant writers and so forth to come up with the project ideas. You all know your county's better than we do with what your priorities are. And then we can go through this program. It's just another pot of money that the county is eligible for to go after funding. It's different than scrap and scuff and all those kinds of things. I know you all familiar with those. This one has been underutilized and I think the district has given a lot of money back over the years. So we've had conversations with them about trying to reestablish this and bring it back to allow the counties to know that this is available to you all. So that's what I'm here today for your consideration, answer any questions you all might have. Projects for inclusion, I'm sorry, Commissioner Projects for inclusion, you know, if they, if they serve to reduce congestion on the strategic internal system. You all have I-ten that goes right through the county. That's a part of the system. Promote economic development, moving the freight and goods and so forth. All these kind of projects would be deemed eligible under this program. Yes, sir.
Do I understand that all of the TRIP funds are basically a match, a fifty-fifty match?
As I understood, it does start with a fifty-fifty match. I've asked D O T to clarification for our REOs and our, and already counties if there can be some consideration there. I haven't gotten a comp for a hundred percent confirmation that, that we can move that needle a little bit. Some of the match requirements are also in kind, so that's, you know, right of way donations, so forth, some things like that. Another kind of cool part to this program is the projects are regional, obviously in nature, but it doesn't have to cross county boundaries. You guys don't have to have a project that goes into Calvin County or into Gaston County. It can be wholly contained in Jackson County. If we have a project that is across county lines, I would think that would be an opportunity to then say, okay, well, fifty percent is covered by the state. Fifty, maybe y'all pay twenty-five, we'll pay twenty-five. It helps me a couple of more economical. But we are working with D O T to see if we can't move that fifty percent a little bit more one way or the other.
It's going to be my question, if there was a project that was aligned within several counties, would the participating counties participate pro rata in the fifty, fifty percent?
It is my understanding for the program that would make sense to me. That's how that would work. Full disclosure, a lot of this program is the counties and their engineers and their grants folks doing a lot of the background to figure out where that acquisition comes from and all, and all those kinds of things. And then, you know, our responsibility would be to gather everybody to then vote and to prioritize those projects for the region. And then, so like whether it's your engineers or whoever goes after that kind of stuff. So that would kind of be how that would function. So each county, I believe, D O T puts out an application. Application period is still open for this year, so that's why I'm kind of scrambling to see if we can. If you guys have a project or something that would be eligible, I can resend that information back out from D O T before it's due to the state. And then obviously, you know, we would prioritize at a regional level, goes to the district, and maybe it goes to state line, state level.
What's the deadline on the application?
The, the original deadline is the twenty-fourth of February. However, I've had a conversation with Maria and she knows we're trying to reestablish this partnership. So if I have a little bit of flexibility on the deadline for projects. I do have one project that came in from Gulf County, so that's kind of the reason, another reason why we're trying to get the, get the executive committee established, reestablish that, so they're able to submit their project. There used to be an agreement with Gulf County and Bay County, and that's since, I guess, it's been resolved a little bit, so they're, they're trying to also, you know, again, originally it was going to be reestablished in three counties, but now we're trying to do the whole five-county rural region.
When do you think you will have that complete?
You all are my fourth stop. I have Gulf County, Franklin County, and Calvin County have all entered the interlocal. I'll be with Liberty County Thursday night, and then that would be hopefully the day that it would be established, all five counties by end.
I'd like to approve the interlocal agreement.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Page and a second by Commissioner McKinney. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Now, along these lines, I like this. This is a good idea for the planning council. But we need to start looking for some means or mechanism for these small four counties to pave dirt roads. Don't ask me where the money's going to come from. That's your job. But let's start looking to see if we can come up with a program, whether it's federal or state, that will help us get some of these roads paved. I mean, I got a hundred and eighty-nine miles in my district.
About paved roads?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unpaid roads. How many you got?
Not that much.
We all, we've all got. How many, Jabo, how many miles of dirt roads we got? Nine hundred and something? We need to be working on, from our perspective, that is very important. If the planning council can start looking at that, and I'd be glad to discuss this with Chris.
Sure.
I think all of the counties that you're talking about right now will jump on board. We just need to find a mechanism. And I don't know what the final answer will be. Sadly, this probably should have taken place sixty, seventy years ago. They should have come up with a plan for all these counties to pave these roads, but it didn't happen. So if you'll take that back, I would appreciate it.
I sure will.
Work on it and you can let me know at the next meeting where you're at.
Sure, and I'll confess, we don't have an engineer or anybody on staff, so as far as the.
We don't need an engineer. Dirt and they need paving. We, we can handle that part. You start looking for the money.
I'll, I'll start looking for the money, sure, absolutely. I've got, I've got one more question while I'm here. Would you all be for the interlocal agreement? Are you all willing to appoint the primary representative and an alternate for that committee so we can get moving if I get approved on Thursday night from Liberty County? Who would be my representative for the county on that?
I'm sort of on the Appalachian regional planning council.
I can't.
Do you know? We don't want, but you, because you're leaving.
I'll serve as alternate since I'm already sort of in transportation disability.
If.
No, that, no, no, that's fine. You didn't step up right quick.
You gotta have an alternate.
No, he said he's.
Unless, no, you go ahead and.
I can, but I will be, I will, will be on next.
I'll tell you what, you go ahead and do it as long as you're available. How about that? You and Donald.
We'll address it once. Cross that bridge when you get there. So we need a motion to appoint.
Yep.
I'll offer a motion that we appoint Chairman Peacock as the primary.
Page, it's going to be Page and you.
He already serves on.
I'm on.
I'll offer a motion that we. Yeah, I'll do it. I'll make a motion to. As primary, secondary.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner McKinney. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Don't win by the fall.
Thank you very much.
And to work on that project for me.
I'll do it.
Thank you. Ms. Deborah Hines.
I don't know if she's online.
Will Anne, you want to present it?
I sure will. So this is a request for board approval of a contract for credit card acceptance at library locations. This is just to be able to, to accept credit card payment. And it goes along with a software they already have in place. We just needed an actual contract to be able to accept the credit card.
I'll go motion to approve.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner McKinney, a second by Commissioner Donald Froh. I have one question. Will this system sustain itself?
Are you asking if it will cost us any money?
The question.
I do not believe so, but I will get you a firm answer on that. I don't want to say for sure, but I, I believe it's sort of like our credit card machines now where that is what pays for the use of it is the fee.
There's no flat fee that we would have to pay?
No, this system, from what I read in the contract, I know there's a twenty-five dollar a month charge, I think. Is that correct?
That is what it says.
And then all the charge backs, in other words, those fraudulent charges come back to us too.
Yeah.
So we, in theory, it could cost some money.
What I.
I don't know.
I believe this is being funded, though it doesn't say it here, with the, with her grant money.
I think the P L I X is paying for it, best I, what I read.
Right.
The twenty-five dollar a month.
But you got. Well, I just don't want us to be on the hook. System that is continuing to cost money month after month, with the charging, the fee is seventy-five cent per transaction.
That's what they're charging to the customer.
Right. All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. You follow us on that.
I will.
Chief Broner.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
First item I have is requesting board approval of utilizing LifeScan Wellness Centers to complete the annual firefighter physicals using the City of Clearwater contract.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill.
I'm sorry.
You're out of order.
I'm out of order. I followed up. The first item would be request for board approval for grant match funds to the town of Grand Ridge Volunteer Fire Department in the amount of seventy-five hundred from the grant match line.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Page. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Now, Charlie, if you get one piece of paper, you can keep up with it.
Next item is requesting board approval to utilize LifeScan Wellness Centers to complete annual firefighter physicals using the City of Clearwater Florida.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Donald Froh. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Can the hospital here provide the services?
Not for the cost that LifeScan is providing these services.
How much are we paying for these services now?
So currently, the basic standard physical that we're completing on firefighters are four hundred and thirty-three dollars per employee. And the LifeScan Wellness does what the hospital does, but they also have a lot larger list of items that they complete, and it's four hundred ninety-seven dollars per employee. And that is still within our current budgeted amount. We will bring back a contract for new hires that we will continue with the hospital.
Okay, this, this, Charlie, this list is what they do as part of that fee?
Yes, sir. That's correct. They do more in-depth screenings for cardiovascular and then they do more in-depth screens for cancer due to the inherent risk of the job.
All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Rep Daniel.
Morning.
Morning.
So what I have for you today is a request for board approval of work authorization for southeastern surveying to establish the boundary of our easement at Magnolia Landing. Given, you know, the circumstances of it being a perpetual easement through F W C, I want to make sure we were maximizing all the property that we could and possibly even negotiate with the owners.
I got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Page. I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
I know there. I know there is a proposal to purchase that property.
Hmm, no, sir. I would intended to apply for a grant, but the grant that I was wanting to use.
No, not, not from the. Magnolia Landing?
Magnolia, no, that's.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm wrong.
Peacock is.
Disregards.
Yeah.
Further south, yeah. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
I approve. I do have a question, though. Do we, do we have any indication, is there any indication that the property or the easement is actually extends beyond the clear? On the down river side?
No, sir, but for twenty-two hundred dollars, I figured it was worth no one for sure.
It's, you know, obviously very tight down there, down to some of the marks. It's difficult for anyone to, with all the tourers, it's difficult for anyone.
Yes, sir.
Put a boat in or take a boat out and even get down there to it, so.
That's right. It's almost impassable for a, for a truck and a boat trailer.
Who owns the land around that, outside the brand of boundary?
The whole, so there's, I think it's around nine acres, that whole circle where it goes over to Mr. Melvin's is, is Ormoc.
And that's on the same side that we're talking on the both sides?
Yeah, so the.
So have you reached out to them and see how you?
I did years ago, and they were kind of open to it, but it was a funding issue. And I was hoping to use SBIP grant, which is open now, but that, that particular grant does not purchase property, so we kind of hit it dead.
We don't, we don't actually own the land, we just have an easement.
That's right, so if, well, so this is again similar to Peacock. FWC has a perpetual easement with the property owners that was before the mocks, so it's, obviously it could last forever. So as long as, because my biggest concern was, I didn't know what the, the legal, how it was drawn up as far as the easement. I didn't want to get into another situation like Peacock where lease is up and hey, we got a scramble. So I reached out and said, no, it's not a lease, it's a perpetual easement. I said, well, let's just make sure we're getting all that we're signed up for. And then once we get those boundaries established, I hope to negotiate with the owners for either expanding the easement or, you know, some type of other partnership.
Does FWC have a, have a survey done? Was that going to leave?
No, all they had was a legal description, and I can't decipher myself, sir.
Alright, thank you, sir. Okay, Jeffrey Register.
First thing I have is a request for approval of task work order for FDOT and B Scott grant application. Documentation completion for Prim Avenue Bridge and Reddick Mill Bridge.
Got a motion by Commissioner Paye, second by Commissioner Hill. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Jeffrey, the next.
Next one I've got is a request for board approval, task work order for FDOT, Scranton, Scott grant application. For Blue Springs Road and Kansville Road.
And a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Donna Fro. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
And the next one I have, request board approval of task work order for FDOT Scott grant application. Documentation for River Road. No movement, Jeff.
Just a quick question, just a clarification. We've done a lot of times, I'm assuming these fees are in line with what's typically been paid in the past for these services.
We, we typically in the past did them ourselves. We don't have an engineer on staff anymore.
Right, but.
They, they require such a standard. This is our first time doing it this way. We've always done them in house, but I feel like they're fair.
I know. The only, the only difference in this particular one right here, it won't be twenty-five hundred dollars, it will be five thousand. For the simple reason of the number sixteen addition, be for the old Spanish Trail, the CIGP application. So it, it will be included in the five thousand. So it'll be two different.
No movement, Jeff, with the expansion of law special.
Got a motion by Commissioner McKinney, second by Commissioner Paye. Go ahead, Commissioner.
On River Road, what portion, portion of the road? Are we talking about the full length? I know we talked about before about the breaking it down.
Right, there, you know, there's, there wouldn't be enough money to do the whole thing, so we kind of are looking at it from Timberline and Conseil. You know, as if we can get the money.
Didn't we already have a license? Did you?
Yeah.
We already had a license.
Just like, just like what y'all.
Yeah. Yeah, we haven't voted on it. Yes.
To clarify, are you handling number sixteen lumped in with this?
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
That's River Road and sixteen.
We are doing sixteen at the same time.
Yes, sir. That's what you just brought up.
Well, because on, on your paperwork, it shows twenty-five hundred dollars. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Alright, but, but also number sixteen, the price is not going to be five thousand dollars, and I was just trying to clarify that. But it will include the CIGP application for, for Old Spanish Trail as well.
So ten and sixteen is the same, is that?
They're, they're on the same.
Pass quarter, so twenty-five hundred for each on the dish.
Alright, yeah.
That gave each of the engineers to a fee.
So you got that right. Alright, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Hunter, pass.
Hello, good morning.
Morning.
The first item I have is a pressing approval of the HMGP grant agreement for critical facilities generators. And I will clarify both of these grants, the two HMGP ones, there's a twenty-five percent match requirement. So you'll see there, it's like the one point seven million dollar total budget, so we'd be on the hook for four hundred and thirty thousand dollars if we went ahead with it. We do have an application in through DEO for HMGP match program, which is supposed to go with this HMGP grant. So we have applied for those, and we are, hopefully we'll get funded through that. So your motion could be contingent upon us getting the funding for the, for that HMGP grant.
So just for clar, just for clarification, you're applying for a grant to fund the match as well?
Yes, so we have already applied for it back in, I think it was November or December. And we had approval on one of those already, which is the Cusa Road Project. So we're hoping that, they said that they're working through applications now and will tell us if we are funded.
So the motion is to approve the grant application.
Right, you got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Donna Fro. That's contingent upon the approval of the match.
And I'll bring that match back for you whenever, if we do get.
Any questions? All those in favor? Carries five zero. Okay, Hunter, the next one's yours.
Okay, you want to go and do the same thing for item twelve, or kind of, is that group together? They're both HMGP agreements. One of them's for critical facilities to, for generators, and one of them's for lift stations for generators.
With the same thing.
Yeah.
Can you see all that?
There's a.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Paye, and Danielle's got a question.
Well, I mean, you're saying contingent on getting the grant, but if we sign the paperwork today, then we would bring the grant back to you and say we're not going to do it if we don't get the match.
Yes.
Just so we're. Because these are going to get signed and sent off, and, and we won't know about the other grant.
Yes, I mean, you could always, I think, when we applied for, I think their funding was there to be budgeted in the future. So if we don't get the, the match grant, we still do them, just the funding has to come from some other place.
Just a four hundred and thousand on both levels?
No, one of them's four hundred and thirty-four thousand.
The other one's like eighty thousand, I think.
Sixty-eight, seventy-five, and the other one is eighty thousand, seventy-six, fifty. The only other place I can tell you that, that these funds would come from is they are. We feel fairly confident that we'll get the match.
I got a question concerning the, the technical aspect of this, if I may, Chairman.
Go ahead.
Uh, the, there's eleven, there's eleven lift stations that we're trying to provide emergency power to. But there's what, four permanent fifty KW and forty KW? I guess the other two portable will actually provide power to the other jet, the other lift stations.
Right, that's the.
As needed basis.
Right.
Is there a reason why we didn't get permanently?
We've got a couple that have load loads, and they're completely dependent on operation of a specific business. We have mass power outage, and I'll use the even for instance. If they're not operational, and that brings up two lift stations that won't be functioning. But having a portable will allow the full of that to go to one operation such as Lowe's, and that, in the county, that would be operating off the generator. So that'll keep everything kind of working.
Red, who size these generators?
Do we do that, right?
Yeah, we, one of the consultants.
Oh, Lord. Okay. Hope I had an electrical engineer do it. Alright, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
So item thirteen is a request approval of the CDV GDR grant to fund the replacement of the correctional facility roof.
Yeah, alright.
We, we've.
We've been talking about that roof.
This is the actual agreement with DEO to fund the project, so we.
Okay.
And a, an award letter for almost a year now, this is the actual grant agreement.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Paye. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Hunter?
Yes, and the last one is a approval of the DEO rule infrastructure grant to fund the Commerce Park and Endeavor Park site certifications. This is one also we had an award letter for about a year ago, this is finally getting an improvement in place.
A motion by Commissioner Hill. Second, second by Commissioner Donna Fro. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Ms. Scarlett?
I'll take that one. This is a request for board approval to set a public hearing to amend the capital improvement element for February twenty-second at six fifteen PM. And this is required because River Road has to be in that element, and it is not currently.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Paye. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Okay. Unity development, okay. Did we get all of your minutes approved, Maria? Everything's done. Check. Hunter, you were next.
So I just passed that in front of you, just a further discussion of American Rescue Plan Funds. Last meeting we had, you gave me an objective to get some different cost assessments together for the Endeavor property, so this is what's in front of you. Not saying you have to make a motion or anything today, but just wanted to get this in front of you to, helping you make your decision on potential options you can use the funds for.
Are there any questions?
These are, these are just recommendations for the.
These.
What's the total sixteen these, well, that's all the improvements considered out there?
That's just the estimate, yes, of all the numbers there.
I would say that we, we need to be very mindful, constituents come up to me and asking, why is that being all spent within five miles of Mariana? And it's county money when cities got no money, so we got to be very mindful of that.
Well, it, it goes back to what I said, you know. I would recommend that the board look at some project or two, and then spread the money throughout the county.
I do agree with that, but this right here is endeavor that we have to create jobs for the whole county and the whole panhandle, really.
I agree.
And we have an opportunity to do something that we don't want to have to fund all, you know. So I agree with you, it needs to be spread around, but we really need to look at endeavor.
Yeah, I think we'll look at maybe one project for endeavor.
And if they're saying it's all, you know, we've all fought for our communities, but this is for all of our communities.
I'm thinking along those same lines, boys, endeavors, the infrastructure getting, the infrastructure there to endeavor. Yeah, that expands the rest of the community.
But the cities aren't getting money.
Yeah, the city, now y'all went on the screen.
We got other, we got other parts, and I agree with that, but if we don't create jobs with this opportunity we have.
Oh, yeah, I'm not opposed to, I'm, I'm just saying we got to look at very mindfully, I mean, it's, I mean, trails are not at all a priority.
Well, this ain't true.
Oh, no, 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 the original.
Yeah.
This is it.
Mr. Donna Fro. Are you, what are your plans for Mashburn Road?
Be nice to see it paved all the way out to Hope Church Road, which, and you say that it's already being paved to the current development as it is. Correct?
Right.
We've got water and sewer extended to that new development.
But that's, that's it, it doesn't make it be paved.
So are you committing any of your funds to that?
I don't have any funds.
Talking about the bond money.
Put, put, put his in my account. You do have funds.
You do have funds.
So item three there, that's the cost.
Money, we got one point nine, just like everybody else, but you probably had plans.
It would depend on, you know, whether there was, you know, real hope for additional development on that.
Well, there's real hope for additional development.
But there, you know, there's, there's other, there's other projects in my district that, you know, could be just as important.
We, we do the calculus of what a difference was, I think, where you were, Hunter, y'all pulled up, what the difference was.
David was one of them.
David, somebody.
So the, the rest of Mashburn Road, you mean?
Yeah.
So item three right there, it has it, and it's four thousand one hundred feet remaining to be paved, and it's estimated cost of two million.
And that's just the paving, right?
Yes.
That's not.
That shouldn't be, but it's got to have water and sewer, but that cost ain't right.
Yeah, but I say it's about a million miles.
So the city of Mariana offered, you just keep reading there, having CDV GDR grants which will install sewer along the entire length of Mashburn Road. So that doesn't have to be included.
Well, then that number's not right.
Well, let's see what it's based off of, it's based off what they're currently paving at twenty-five hundred feet, it costs one point four million, so just do, four thousand one hundred times five hundred.
What they're doing is watering sewer all, I mean, for that, right?
What's that, what's the cost you got on this, your roads are doing now, Matt?
Well, mine's being chipped, but I mean, you might as well figure seven fifty, seven, yeah, seven hundred fifty to a billion dollars a mile, and this is not even a mile.
Yeah, that's, that's my point, it's not a two-thirds mile.
Yeah, but David can answer.
Yeah, so on Mashburn, there's forty-one hundred feet left to be paved, and that, you know, just guessing, that's a three point two million dollar to pave it. Maybe more, maybe less on it, but the city of Mariana will be running sewer. So we got grant funds on doing that, and we may be able to use, if we got enough sewer funds to clear the right of way and reduce some of the paving costs and all. Associated with that as well.
But that is the current paving project out of the entire length of Mashburn Road, is that roughly half of it?
Well, it's, we're paving twenty-five hundred feet, there's forty-one hundred feet left. Yeah, so about a third of it, right.
Got everybody's attention, because everybody wants to go, what's going on? I tell them all kinds of things, I say, no, they just put water and sewer, paving the road.
Well, and I got them clearings for that, the frontage there, so it'll make it a lot better visible in, impact, you know, we were doing the road and all that overgrowth. That doesn't look good, so they're clearing about extra three or four feet, three or four acres there. And our ponds are starting to turn out nice out there, putting a new drainage structure on those ponds that you go across. And when you drive in, into that industrial park, you'll have.
Nice pond?
Two nice ponds on there. We'll find some money, put fountains in there somewhere or another.
I guess.
Harriers.
Hunter, where did, where did the, the cost come from? I mean, I see where the numbers came from, what math came from, but on the civic center, the dining hall. You feel pretty comfortable with the square footage cost that you used?
Yes, so these are from David as well, this is from that preliminary work we've done on the projects for our grant stations. And that's what the numbers came up to, to be as.
Yeah, they're, all they're, my guess is, good as, yes, it's better than my good guess of two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, based on what we just did at the autism facility out there. So those are.
Where are we on the grant for the gemstones?
Still waiting, that, that money has not been totally released yet, so, you know, they're making awards gradually. I spoke with the governor's office, a gentleman there, Alan, set me up with two weeks ago to make sure it stays on the right radars. And then we talked, well, I'm talking to DEO regularly, I've had about three conversations now with them on. But, you know, they don't tell you anything. I've had about three conversations now with them on, but, you know, they don't tell you anything other than you're still being considered.
So how long are we going to wait?
Well, you certainly would want to wait till they say they've sold out all the money because you, we're still in consideration. I think they're lining it up with governor press releases is really how that's being rolled out, is timed with him making visits to, to announce them.
They didn't kind of make the initial cut a little bit, but they've got money that's rolling back in, and so...
They have not said you are not, there is no more money, or you are not eligible. They continue to say the project is eligible, it's a matter, it's a point system, there's more requests than there is money, and so they're, they're going through those.
This is with the special needs shelter.
That's right, that's right.
Right.
Right, so as for the funding that had the special needs shelter in it, but it's designed, designed to, if you don't get that funding, and all you want to do is the civic center, you cut off that square footage there, something like that. There's another round of app, funding that's coming out that, as I always say, oh, you're a lot more suited for that one, and that's the CVG mid funding, mitigation funding, and that should be coming out soon, you know. A little bit of our frustration with DEOs, they had change in people and some things like that, but we're working as hard as we can trying to put some pressure on to fund this, this project.
We've been waiting
Yeah.
For six months.
This one went in in September, the one, this one that we submitted in September.
Well, we did give the first time.
That's right.
The first round, the second round.
The first round, we got the jail roof, so we submitted in the second round in September, and, you know, I talked, like I said, as soon as two weeks ago to Drew Winters, the DEO, who said, we're still sorting through them. You're not, not eligible, but you're not awarded yet either.
At some point, we're going to have to pull the plug on it, and forward, or we'll never get them.
And then there's, there's a third, third round, and I'm waiting, three, four, five million dollars.
The unique opportunity that we find ourselves in is this particular funding, and the third round he's talking about is the mitigation money. It does not come again, this is directly related to a disaster. These are not funding sources we will have ever again, unless, apart from a disaster, an opportunity for. So you have this tension of, yes, we want to do it, but we have a funding source that will never come again apart from a disaster. And so you either have to decide to jump ahead and say, we're not even going to try for that third round, i- if we're not funded this round, or we're willing to hang with it and see it through.
Keep us up to date, so we can make the decision.
Quick question, just for my own clarification, the, the autism program, which is under, currently being renovated, it's going to be up and operational in four or five months, whenever that building is finished. Paving of that road, that double road, and getting water and wastewater to that building, that is already in...
Yeah, we've, we've got the funding for that, and so we, we hope to have it out of the biz in the next week or two.
So it's not being bidged yet, so you plan?
Yeah, yeah, we're conditioning that to put it out in the biz, so that's all funded.
And so...
We got about three million dollars left in the job growth grant, and so we call this phase three, that'll pave the roads, work on the underground electrical, and...
Is all that going to be bid as one project?
One project.
Paving, water, waste, and electrical, all being one project.
This should be turned by June, if that goes right, biz go out.
It has to be finished by June, next year, yeah. Yeah, they kind of threw us a little bit of a curve, we were, we were dragging our feet a little bit of seeing how all the other funds would work into this, because your contract for the job growth grant says all funds had to be obligated by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And recently, they turned us over to another group at DEO, and those guys said, that's a mistake in your contract, all funds have to be spent by June twenty twenty-three. And so we've got to spend on, and that's, that was a statutory thing, when we got the job growth grant, legislature said all funds had to be expended within five years of the appropriation. Well, they didn't give us a grant agreement for over a year because of all the Dozier issues, so we were kind of behind, but I knew we had obligated by June of twenty twenty-three, that was no problem. And there's no problem finishing it by June, June of twenty twenty-three, you just got to go ahead and move forward with it.
Water and waste, of course, the electrical that's already being done right now, water and the waste, though, needs to be in place for the autism
Yeah.
building, so it's, you know, tiny ones, so you feel pretty comfortable with that?
Yeah, well, the, the wastewater is there, the water and the wastewater are there for the autism, yes, yeah. I mean, we're putting it in this bid, but it's a small extension from the, it just tied into the existing sewer, buying into the existing water, water and sewer are there.
So, so again, when the autism renovations are complete, and they're ready to occupy that building, there won't be a problem getting water, we won't be waiting for that.
That's right, that's right. But the rest of the campus out there, water and sewer, that's, that'll take a load, you know, we believe that.
Well, it will be going to the convention center and the museum.
That's correct, that's correct, yeah. Yeah, and a little bit of what I was waiting on is, we put in some Mariana grants to help water the sewer on that. But now that I've got to spend this money before June twenty twenty-three, I'm going to have to go ahead and do some of the water and sewer, because I got to pave the roads, and then you put water and sewer in before I pave the roads. It's not that much of an addition, but that's one reason we're kind of waiting, to use some of the other Mariana grant funds to help out with that.
What's the scope of the road paving? Is it just the, the divided road, all the way up to where it's permanent?
Well, it's just Scott Drive and, and Endeavor Parkway, those are the primary, and then we'll bid a few of the other roads as mainly the one around to the museum and the circling road up there. We'll, we'll bid all of those out too, and it'll be bid so that there can be alternate bids, so we make sure we utilize all the money.
How long we had this grant?
Well, I guess we've had it a few now, years.
Eighteen, I think.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, we got funded, but we got the governor, Governor Scott approved it, so that is eighteen. But they didn't give us a grant agreement for over a year, even though we were funded, because they didn't want to turn us loose until they finished up investigations out there. So we've been trying to stretch it out.
We need to have it as soon, as soon as possible, but I understand what you're saying, keep us posted that...
It's all going to be spent by June of twenty twenty-three, there's no doubt about that.
This year?
This year.
This year, I mean, we, we wait and wait and wait, I understand, there's other things, but we don't need to wait.
Yeah, no, we, we'll have it out of the biz in a few weeks.
How long do you, does the board think the need to look at these projects to come up with a plan?
The R P money projects?
Yeah.
Don't we already kind of...
You've got, what you've got, propose.
Yeah, I know.
You've got four point five million, you've got the other four point five million.
Like some of these, or, I mean, what's your...
What I suggest is, is you look at it, let's see if we can come to consensus on some major projects, and then...
And if you also have, you have other projects you're interested in, just come see myself, and we can give different estimates for you too, to work up something.
Yeah.
Descriptions and things to be able to share, everybody else.
How much money have we obligated, that much, or have?
Five seventy-five, or seven fifty, for the attorney fees is six thousand, right?
It was between six and seven that's technically obligated. That's between the premium pay and attorneys.
So bottom line, look at that, how much, nine million or so?
Yeah, so that leaves, let's just say eight hundred, or eight point five, eight point four, somewhere in there.
So we're not considering any raises for other programs?
You could, you look at it.
And too, I think that's the question, it's when do we want to, that's the question you asked.
The question is, when do y'all want to come back and talk about this again in detail?
Before next meeting, maybe, or, I mean, before the...
We're doing a special meeting anyway, before the next meeting. Yeah, we, we just...
No, that was a public hearing. But we can set a special meeting.
Y'all want to do it?
So twenty second.
They're already coming.
Yeah.
How long we need?
I would, I would do it minimum four thirty to give you a full hour, and then you have a little bit of time in between before six, four, four thirty.
Can we have a thanks, someone, what, all we've already discussed, where we can look?
Yeah, yeah, we, well, we can print what y'all saw last time as well as this, so just...
Well, there's another list, that other list, yeah.
Yeah, the other list, remember, was built off the original ARCA requirement, so that's how that list came into being. We went ahead and brought it to you, because a lot of work had gone into, into that list, but we're by no means pushing any particular list, that's just a jumping off point for discussion. And then this came for the last meeting, y'all kind of wanted to see an overall picture of endeavor with all the moving parts, so they're kind of two different lists. We're not saying this has to be all ARCA funds, of course. This is just kind of the things, based on what you all have given us direction on, that you'd like to see accomplished with different funding sources.
What, anything else?
But what Hunter's saying, if you all have a specific project in your area that you're interested in, let him know, and he can get an estimate ready before the meeting that y'all discuss.
Everybody got that?
So do y'all want to do a special meeting, or?
Let's do a special meeting. Got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Faith, to a special meeting on the twenty second at four o'clock. Four o'clock will give us adequate time. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. All right, anything else?
That.
We finished this, but... Mr. Bashford? You got anything, words of wisdom from the sheriff? Okay, keep up the good work. Shell?
Um, yeah, a couple of things. Last week, I got a call from Buck Dickinson with F D M about our the FEMA reimbursement related to, I can't remember the job number.
Final project, District One and...
With Graham County Land Company, Missy Mossy, and, and the Esco Company and all that, and he said that FEMA did approve us paying Nation Mind's Esco Company, as long as we get all the releases for everybody. And I asked Buck to put that in writing for me, he said he would, I haven't gotten that, I emailed a follow-up yesterday, still have not gotten that, but if they're okay with us paying Nation Mind, and we get releases up and send a sample of what Missy Mossy is going to sign, I'm fine with that. They, Nation Mind is going to indemnify us for anybody else's claims, so I would be okay with us doing that as soon as I get the documentation in writing from the state.
So you need to, you need to continue to fund those services.
I think everybody else would appreciate if they didn't have to wait another two weeks to bring this back to the board.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Donna Froh to approve the contingent upon, the payment, contingent upon approval of the releases, the right.
So this, that'll be out of our way, and we'll be able to proceed with forty one seventy-seven on any other.
Well, this is just related to whether or not it would be an issue for reimbursement, we, we've already approved the payment.
Right, but that's holding us up right now. Finish up forty one seventy-seven.
I don't, I don't... So once she sends me that information to write the check to, I'll need the company
Oh, yeah, yeah.
information, then we will, after that check clears, we'll send all of our stuff to G P Strategies, and they can turn it in on the forty one seventy-seven basic work, and it should be done. And then you can find out where we go during that.
Yeah, we turn in roads and get food to...
So if you get, if you get confirmation, then, say, by the end of this week of, of the certification and everything, how long would y'all suspect that, that check could be wrote in, being, it'll probably take a month?
She tells me to write the check, I'm going to write the check, and you assume a week, very clear.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
On the redistricting litigation, I reviewed all the draft pleadings, everything looks good, while we're still waiting to get the other legal descriptions. We may have some questions to bring back to the board, hopefully not, but that's kind of where that...
On the legal description?
On aligning the legal descriptions with the maps as they're drawn, it's just raw minor stuff.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
See, I did ask this morning, and kind of looked into, we're getting ready for the, the FEMA arbitration proceedings, and we had the special meeting last week on that. And, and I don't want to get too much into discussing, discussing strategy, but there are some questions of law that FEMA has raised that getting kind of complex, there are issues that I would rather handle in litigation. I've reached out to an attorney at Baker Donaldson this morning, who does a lot of FEMA arbitration, and she actually was already aware of, like, she was kind of monitoring what was going on, just as a matter of interest. But anyway, I may consider asking for continuance on that, because we, basically, our pleadings don't really align with the argument that we need to make, and I'm going to need to get some clarification on how to handle that before the panel.
We need to have an out of the sunshine meeting to, to discuss that with the full board?
Possibly, I've, we've never done arbitration before. I've never handled an arbitration proceeding before, so I'm not sure at, at what point under the sunshine arbitration is considered litigation, like, if the rules are, are the same or not, but...
Okay. Anything else?
I just wanted to confirm everyone's understanding, now that we're in the arbitration proceeding, this is what we're doing. We're, there's, with arbitration, you appear before this panel, and their decision is final, final. The only way that you are entitled to any kind of rehearing on that would be if there's fraud, corruption, if they refuse to allow you to present evidence, basically like procedural technicalities, but you don't get the same relief as you would in appellate court. So just be prepared that whatever decision that panel makes, that it's pretty much written in stone. And from my understanding at this point, we're in arbitration for good, like this is the fact that we're stuck with, so I'm just... It appeals, it would be incredibly difficult, likely not successful.
Well...
What's up with them, dude? I mean, all the, you go before arbitration, and the arbiters decide, they, they run through a decision, and the people in arbitration abide by that.
So they don't have their big hitters there?
Um, I don't...
From the bedside, hopefully?
I don't, I don't know that I would call them big hitters, I think the, the issue is that they've raised what's really a, a really technical legal issue in a proceeding that generally is more fact focused. So for questions about whether your documentation was sufficient under the rules, like that, that's, that's something that can be easily dealt with before the arbitration panel, but this is more, more of a, a technical issue related to contract language. And they, again, I don't want to get too much into strategy, but I need to be able to present witnesses that are on the witness list, and, you know...
Why, you know, why do you think they brought that issue up?
Um, it seems like, and again, this is not anything that I'm familiar with, such as me, you know, having conversations with other attorneys across the state and what they've experienced, but it kind of seems like nobody brings in the lawyers until the last minute, even on FEMA's side. And so I didn't draft the briefs that were filed, I didn't review the briefs that were filed, they were all prepared by the consultants, and they don't necessarily get into really strong legal analysis. And FEMA's brief doesn't have a lot of legal analysis, it's just that they have raised an issue that's really a question of law, and kind of struggling with how, how, how I'm going to present this when we already have our witness list and our planned exhibits, that's already been filed, you know?
So you will have a good feeling of where you're going by the next meeting, right?
Maybe.
We may need, if, if we need to call a special meeting, just let us know. Maybe you can brief us further. Okay? Okay, that it?
I think so.
Ms. Rebecca, do you have something? Well, you're not on the agenda. Come on up. I saw you sitting back there. You've got to be here for something. If I bring in this money, come over here asking.
Well, it's kind of sort of that.
Your tag just went up.
Oh, I know. She'll reap praise. I'll get her reappraised every three weeks.
You have a special district?
Now, I liked that first part. What do you want?
Okay, so, good morning, commissioners. Um, so before you, I have, uh, been given from my accountant and my auditors, the new, the amount that was left over from my twenty twenty one budget. Um, I have, it's been taking a little while to get because I've changed accountants and it took a little longer to get it than anticipated. Um, anyway, this money, this fifty two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars was left over from my twenty twenty one budget from a vacant position. And, um, the funds that I did not use for our travel and education expenses of COVID. So I have been bringing to you a couple of years ago about our FEMA system that we use in order to give, you know, our appraisals, uh, assessments in order to assess properties. Um, it is becoming obsolete and it is at the end of its life. And our programmer has left the company as of January of twenty two. So I am without support. I am without, uh, people to implement the new legislative laws from Department of Revenue, well, from legislation, anyway. So we, we're in the, we've been in the look for a new system. And I have looked at several. And then I realized that there was twenty four of the counties that was on the same system I am on. Twenty of those are in the process, if not already have converted to this new GSA system. It is going to cost a total of three hundred and eight thousand dollars. But it can be broken up over several years, okay? But then there is a maintenance, annual maintenance fee as anything and a, uh, a.
Hosting, hosting please.
Hosting, yes, sir. And then they will be able to, um, be able to help us when they're, when they're off site and we have trouble, they can come in and do what needs to be done on programming and, uh, assisting us in support. Well, I'm just asking that you would allow me to keep that fifty two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to go towards this. And at any time that I have got excess funds in the future, I will be putting it towards this to cut that amount down every year. So.
Rebecca, on your annual maintenance and holding, that comes around thirty six, one oh five a year, I mean, sixty three, one of, uh, eight a year. Is that, when would that start? When the, when the completion of the installation, if you so choose, or, so that, that's not going to be an immediate cost analysis, correct?
No.
And when would you project it? If, if everything went well, when would you project it at?
So I, when I spoke to the vendor, um, last week, she said that there is a costability that I would be able to go live come October, we're hoping, but it would have to be after the final roll. She doesn't want to do anything between preliminary and final to mess up our numbers, our budget, and submitting our role to the tax, to the Department of Revenue.
How much do you have in your budget for acting on this?
You have any? We've not, we've not submitted this into the budget before now.
He, he means in your regular budget. You have so much for computer software currently.
Oh, yeah.
This will take the place of.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Right.
Okay, so now we have a annual, uh, an amount that we pay our vendor now and that's, uh, five thousand, about fifty one hundred dollars a month we pay.
About sixty thousand, whatever, sixty thousand. So that almost all set the two things. So that would be a wash.
Now, will this new system replace the old system?
Yes.
So you won't be paying that fifty one hundred a month?
No, sir. No, sir.
But, but you'll have to replace it with sixty three thousand a year at all. So that'd be almost a wash. So how long would it finally, you say you can spread it out payments? Do they have a amortization timeframe on that?
About two years.
Pay the three hundred and eight thousand? So that only financed for two years?
Well, we could go longer, but my term ends in a couple of years. So we were trying not to go any further than my term.
The county will still be.
I understand that. Yeah, we can break it up to four years if you'd like. I don't have a problem with that.
They do in-house financing is what they do when we do the state finance.
Yeah. And they know that, they know that they're going to get their money eventually. Whether it is in two years or three years or four years, they know they're going to get their money because it's government. They know that.
Really what you get for sixty three thousand dollars a year, do you really get that much maintenance? I mean.
If we have a problem.
If you, if you know that, well.
We have people that can be remoted in and work on our system, or we have to hire IBM to come in and that's extra.
How often does that happen? I know, but.
Hmm, it varies. We've had a problem here lately and so IBM has sent the information and we've been able to have, um, the guys that are doing some of our IT and Robert and Angela both have been helping getting it fixed in the office.
Is there any grants available for this? I mean, a state, I mean, obviously it's a state legislative mandate, but is, did they apply? I mean, they subsidize enough a grant process or anything?
I have not looked into that, no.
You'll just check for it. I'd hate to know that there was just something available out there that we could utilize a week. A hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, what do you need to decision by our listeners?
Well, um, I've got to be able to submit it into my budget, you know, um, by July, well, I mean, my budgets due July one, so I've got to submit it to the state and I need to be working on it in May, so.
But you want, you want to keep the money now.
I want to keep this fifty two thousand to go towards that, yes.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Donovan, second by Commissioner McKenna to allow you to keep this excess revenue that you reported fifty two thousand or whatever.
For, for this system.
For this system, yes, sir.
Go ahead, go with this system.
That's correct. I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to go with somebody because there is no way around it. If you want your money or your numbers for your budget, I got to have a system and this one's going to be obsolete and there's not going to be anybody to program it.
So how many more years, worst case scenario, that you have on that system? I mean, obviously they'll pay that, pay that out.
There's no way to know since this programmer left and they're changing things in Tallahassee this year. I don't know if I'm going to be able to, be able to do what needs to be done with this system.
Normally we're not quite as bad as we are now, but we had to use non-recurring funds to balance the budget, so we just add into it. We got to find some money somewhere.
Not only that, but we're looking at using non-recurring funds for next year and the following year.
It's going to quit being there and then we'll, I don't know.
Okay.
I will look into the grant, you know, and see if there is anything.
If it's a state mandate, I would hope that they allocate some funds, especially.
It's not state mandate.
Thought you said it.
It's just our system.
It's our update to keep our system running.
Have you talked to other vendors?
Oh, yes.
And you've selected this particular one?
Due to the fact that there's twenty four of us, PA, that are going with the same one.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. You get to keep the money.
Thank you.
Huh?
For that system.
For the system, that's exactly right.
Fifty two thousand for the system.
Correct. One way or another, we have to.
We have to go to. Okay, then we just have to, uh, work on the other part.
I think you need to find out whether they'd be willing to finance it for a longer period of time, which it sounds like they could.
They will, they will.
Might be more valuable.
Okay.
Or instead of to.
I'll talk to them and find out and get a different layout as far as the gears, you know, spaced out better.
Well, then, do you know of any possible grants that?
Not on hand, but we'll.
I'll certainly do some research on it also. It might help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rebecca. Part of your news was good. The other part I didn't like.
I would not.
Well, I.
Yeah, I was just going to, uh, add to the redistricting update that I did talk to Lee yesterday and he said that we can anticipate, uh, he's been going back and forth with Kevin. Kevin's been looking and they're trying to line up those, um, legal descriptions and he anticipates having something to us by the end of the week. So, talked to him yesterday.
Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, just, uh, can, can you give me an update on the courthouse lighting, the in-ground lighting? I think the, the lighting around, the socket lighting just makes it functional. Whole lighting is, I haven't looked at it recently.
Yeah, and I'll be honest, I don't have that update. Hunter's got one.
So apparently those lights are under the same, uh, constant control system like you guys had thought about. And so they went now and reviewed those, um, of the twelve fixtures, um, currently, see, the capital fixtures, currently twelve fixtures not working and five ground fixtures not working as well. So they're taking on the warranty for that now to see if the original installer, um, is there, if it's eligible to be under warranty. So hopefully we'll know something soon from that.
Anything else? Mr. Hill? Mr. Page? Mr. McKenna?
Just like seeing, uh, Mr. Register.
Clay? Danielle? Reid? Now let's have a church. Mr. Register? What is the status of the sun replacement? Road sign?
They're working on all those now. Uh, they should probably through, uh, District One, moving on down into District Two. They're, they're working on it, baby.
Okay. Appreciate it. That was an easy one. Well, I want to make sure Marie could hear. You know, we're going through this process of, with, uh, GP Strategies and the arbitration and everything. And I know that we had a fantastic, uh, after-action report that was written. I think we need to go back to that report and we need to add that, uh, a commissioner, if there is another natural disaster like this, that a commissioner be assigned to that process to monitor it and ride, stay with it all the way. That's just, in looking back at this thing, there are some things that have gone on that, uh, I think if we had had someone watching everything, it might have been a little different. And I'm not saying, I'm not criticizing administration or anyone. I'm looking to the future where we might be able to, uh, add a little safety valve there that would help out. I mean.
We know a lot more now.
We, obviously, this group, the three of us know a lot more than the two here. But, uh, I just think future commissions should assign a commissioner to be deeply involved in monitoring everything.
All of the commissioners should be deeply involved.
Well, you can't. There are, there are a lot of things that go on that they are doing, generating paperwork and that. I'm not being critical of them, but, uh, we need to, somebody needs to be right and heard on it. And, and I'm not opposed to all commissioners being involved. So there needs to be a point of contact.
Chairman at the time.
I, I don't have a problem with it being the chairman at the time, being, uh, intimately involved and keeping up with what's going on. We've learned a lesson on this one.
I think, again, it goes back to, to me, the crutch of the problem is, fortunately for Jack County and unfortunately at the same time, fortunately it was our first major disaster at that level. The unfortunate side of that is that there's no way you can be, it can be institutionally knowledgeable enough to know what to do in the middle of a crisis. And that's where I still think the crutch of the problem is that the federal side, the federal government realizes, even as large as our three thousand plus counties in our United States is, and I'm sure territories and all the other, is that they're the experts in this field. To me, it always should be that they have a team that stays here, not for the short time, for long time. I ain't talking about a thirty people team. But they do this, I mean, I think during our time, they had a fire in, uh, Californian earthquake in, in Alaska and, you know, you've seen the spotlight even on the Reeves. You know, they're, they're following the disaster, I got that. But from us, and I'm sure the other counties involved, we, we don't have the knowledge, no matter who's in offices up here. You don't have, that, that is such a procedural, as, uh, Michelle just said a while ago, a lot of this stuff is so procedural, it's, most of this stuff is legislative bound. They have protocols that they do at FEMA level. And for us, even to have a subcontractor or a contractor that, that helps us, I mean, there shouldn't be a mistake made. They should have, they should have a subcontractor or a contractor like we have, Josh, or whoever we pick, and they should be an immediate reporter, warranty people that don't have to say, we're going to take this four months to get it answered. This is procedural. Here's all, here's some, I, I, you know, and then that, that way that converts it. Again, I agree with you, all the commissioners, especially the chairman of time, needs to be deeply involved with it. But I think no matter what we're involved with, we're not going to have the, you know, even statues.
But if you've got it in this after-action report, hopefully that chairman will take the initiative to do some research to make sure he becomes familiar with the FEMA guidelines immediately. Because you're down to days when, uh, some of this stuff has to be done. Yeah. But, uh, obviously some things didn't work out for us. And I'm just trying to come up with a way to, for the future to help prevent that. All of that said, do I hear anything?
Emotionally, I mean, I think that's a no-brainer to start with. I mean, to start with, but again.
Add, go back. All we want to do is go back and add to the after-action report that the chairman of the commission will be, uh, appointed as, to be deeply involved or however you want to word it. And all.
I think. Not to make all the decisions.
Nope, 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 nope. That's not it. Stay or be a pride. Because there, there were things going on. I guarantee you neither one of you knew about. I see it now and I know y'all didn't know.
Only there's no way to know. I mean, again, I don't think, again, I still think, I mean, I, I agree with you, but again, I, I don't, I could imagine what FEMA's boot looks like.
No, no.
Or a truckload of boots.
We were then involved with the, the original contracts that we used.
That's right. That was previous to us, so.
All right.
I'll make a motion to add that, or.
After-action report. Now, the motion is a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Who did you call to thank?
The chair, oh.
Uh, Clint made the motion. He seconded it. Eric seconded. All right. That's all I have. Is there anyone online has anything? Is there anyone in here who has anything they want to discuss?
I have one hand up on Zoom.
Go ahead, Freya.
Hi there, this is Deborah at the Florida, and, um, the, the action that you just took, I could not quite understand what that was. You were adding the chairman of.
Deborah, you sound like you're in a five gallon bucket. Try to do a little better, I can't hear you.
She wants to clarify, is it a motion or what?
Last motion.
Last motion.
Oh, is that what it was? The only thing we did was we went back to our after action report for, uh, Hurricane Michael and we added that the, uh, chairman of the county commission will be appointed as the representative to be deeply involved or intimately involved with any, uh, activities with FEMA.
Yes, on this last storm going forward.
Going forward.
Going forward.
Good, thank you.
All right, anything else, Fred?